All right, thank you. We're a little delayed getting started because we had some technical issues. But we're starting today's work session of August second, two thousand and eighteen, so if we could stand for the pledge. Back, you want to read this in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
As sometimes happens in August, we're down a couple of board members. Tim Hubbard and Catherine Kent are both on vacation this week.
Not together.
Not together. And we'll be back for our next town board meeting on Tuesday. So today's discussion will start with Bold Broadcasting Holiday Light Show. So if, um, do you guys want a couple of people that are, come up for that? Good morning. 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 So I'm just gonna have everybody introduce themselves for the camera. So Laura, you wanna start?
Laura Calmida, Carol Weble with the Riverhead Town Attorney's Office.
And then. Okay. I see you have a presentation, Matthew. Do you wanna?
Yeah, so I just wanted to give a little bit of context to what the event actually is.
And you're, you're applying for a chapter two twenty-five application.
That, that's correct.
Two fifty-five.
Two fifty-five, two fifty-five. That's correct. So, uh, this would be a, it's a holiday light show. Uh, they have similar events in, um, in Jones Beach every year. Uh, but this event would basically be the first time it's ever been brought to Riverhead. Um, it's, uh, taking place at the Long Island Sports Park in Calverton. And this event would basically be about a mile and a half long of, uh, large holiday displays. Some of them as large as more than a hundred feet long by thirty feet high. Um, they're, they're very nice. It's a family-friendly event. Um, I'm glad we got the computer working. Basically, uh, more than a mile and a half, we'll be advertising this all across Long Island. So during the slower times, beginning the weekend before Thanksgiving and running through Christmas, uh, running through, um, uh, running through New Year's, uh, Eve, we'll be running this holiday light show. Essentially, uh, it'll bring people from all over Long Island to the East End during our slower months. Hopefully, bring some business also to some of the businesses, uh, on Main Street who could, uh, who could definitely use the help during the, uh, the slower months. These are just some examples. In all, there's more than sixty displays. And again, they, they span about a mile and a half. There'll be music set to it. It'll be a nice holiday tradition for the, uh, for the East End and hopefully a tradition for Riverhead. So these are just some examples of what some of the displays look like. Uh, but they're coming in from all over the country. And, uh, Bold Broadcasting is part of our, uh, ongoing effort to diversify with more creative community events in addition to our media. We also own and operate one oh four point seven W E L J on the East End. Um, we're, we're also expanding with these events. So this would be a, a, a new hallmark of not just our company, but also of, uh, of the, uh, uh, of the type of events that we wanna bring to the East End and hopefully rebrand Riverhead as a great place for families, for business, and, uh, a nice place to spend the holidays. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of good things about this and there's a lot of peripheral benefits, not just for us putting on the event, but also for, uh, really for businesses, especially in this slower time of year. Hopefully bring a lot of people, uh, bring a lot of people east.
Do you wanna come sit down here?
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to give you some context.
So a couple of things.
Sure.
Um, what are the hour, what are the hours that you're doing?
So the event runs beginning, uh, in second weekend in November. It's only gonna be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in November. So it's five to nine on Friday, uh, on, uh, pardon me, sorry. It's, uh, uh, it's five to eleven on Friday, Saturday, and five to nine on Sunday. And then when we actually get into, uh, December, we add Thursdays to that as well. And then that's also five to nine on Thursdays.
So it's just basically, it, it's, it's Friday and Saturday till eleven or just Saturday?
It's Friday and Saturday till eleven, and then Sunday is five to nine. And then beginning in, uh, in December, we add Thursday. The only exception to that Thursday, Friday, Saturday in December is the weekend following, is, uh, Christmas is on a Tuesday.
Okay.
We run through, straight through to the thirtieth, that's Saturday. So those days will be five to nine as well.
Okay.
But every other time it's, uh, it depends on Thursday nights.
Well, there'd be, well, obviously roadways and stuff, the people that drive, is it gonna be in your car?
Yes, exactly. So no one's getting out of their vehicle at any time. There's no, uh, concessions. There's no Santa's Holiday Village. It's, it's in the vehicle. They pull up, there'll be a ticket booth, uh, like a toll booth. They roll up, they'll pay there, and they'll continue on.
Where's?
Over a radio station, exactly. It's not over E L J, but we have, uh, we're working with the FCC to get special permission for a localized broadcast. They'll just cover the property. People can slip it on when they get there, so enjoy the experience. Yeah, something on that, exactly.
Where is your ticket booth that's not on the diagram? Where are you?
Oh, uh, actually it is. Uh, if you look where the beginning of the event is laid out, I can show you. It's, uh, it's right here, ticket booths. That's, uh, yeah, they're kinda color, kinda, yeah. So, uh, we have about fifteen hundred feet of backup space on the property. So if there is any congestion, there will be room. Um, I, I had mentioned previously that, uh, based upon the volume of vehicles we're expecting, over the length of time the event's going on, uh, there probably will never be any backup, especially ending up on Edwards Avenue. So there, there should be ample space on the property itself. Uh, in, in the event that didn't happen, we would do what my company's done in the past with other large events. We've done events in Brookhaven. We have thirty-five thousand people a day. So we've done very big events. We, we operate the, it's called the Long Island Summer Festival. It's a hot air balloon event. Um, we ended up with traffic where it would end up, uh, threatening, you know, congestion on the roadway. We send the vehicles on, so you'll have to come back when there's room, in all honesty, given the fact that it's constant motion, no one's stopping. It should never be an issue. So there's no reason to stay. Exactly, exactly.
How is the lighting gonna be energized?
So we have, uh, generators. Uh, it'll be powered with, uh, with, uh, trailer generators. And we'll be laying, um, we'll, we'll be having electricians lay cable where necessary on the property. But it'll all be away from people. Uh, again, no one's coming off, uh, i- if you look at the map there, uh, which I believe you had a copy of.
It's happening.
Okay, great. Uh, the, uh, the displays are located near the roadways and all the infrastructure that powers it. Uh, it's really mostly low voltage cable. Nothing's high voltage.
Cars run over it?
No, not at all. The, the vehicle, I, I was gonna say, it's actually, the generators are located in the middle of that protected area. So the displays are around the perimeter and further into the grass, we have our generators.
Are you gonna have any tents?
There are no tents on the property, not at all.
Will there be any concessions for people to leave the park and go into?
We're not doing that this year. Our, our intentions this year are to establish this as a tradition, demonstrate that it can be done safely. It can be a fun activity for families. And it would just add another level of complexity if we add that. So for this year, we're not gonna do that.
What about toilet, toilet, uh?
Um, we, again, we're not letting, there's nobody coming out of the vehicle. Average time on the property will be like five to seven minutes. So we, we don't necessarily believe we need it. Just again, there is nobody, there's no opportunity to gather your vehicle. We're essentially making a side street for a couple of weekends and, and that's about it. We're not expecting too much traffic at any given time.
You have no vendors at all coming?
No vendors at all.
No food, refreshments?
No food, no refreshments, nothing.
What about your security company? What are you doing with that?
So, uh, again, we'll have private staff on site. We're not bringing in security for the event. Again, uh, no one's getting out of the vehicle. There's no crowd control necessary. Uh, it's mostly traffic direction. So we'll have, uh, you know, our properly uniformed staff there with, you know, reflective jackets and.
What time of commu-, what type of communications will you be providing? I mean, are you walking, talking? Are you?
Uh, for our staff, walking talkies, yeah.
Will there be any signs?
There'll be signs up. Uh, we're also gonna be, uh, and, and I was hoping I could ask for some guidance here. But, uh, in regards to signage in Riverhead in terms of promoting the event, there will be signs on the property for traffic direction purposes. But we're, as part of our campaign to bring people to Riverhead, uh, we've partnered with Walk Radio up island, so they'll be doing a lot of promotion for that. E L J will cover the East End.
We do have a sign code. You may wanna look at that. You may need some permits, but based on what you're projecting to put up.
Yes.
Okay. And you can go over to the, the planning and building department. They'll guide you.
All right, that's wonderful. I appreciate it.
What about any electrical permits? Do you think this way would need?
No, but we'll, we'll go out and take a look at the generator installations, make sure they're properly grounded and that wiring at all.
What about fire extinguishers and safety equipment?
That'll have to be at the generators as well, yeah.
The, the company we're working with, so you know, none of it's being installed by us. It's being brought, uh, we're working with a generator company right now. There's a couple of companies bidding for that contract.
I think I would like to ship it to insurance from them. Maybe I should have an additional one short.
Sure, that's fine. That's fine. Uh, and electricians in terms of laying cable, it'll be, you know, uh, generators are located away from the vehicle traffic. And then we'll have, um, power distribution centers, which will be distributed around the property in proximity to the displays. And then its extension cords right to the display.
You're not providing any?
Same as you do for the carnivals.
Any kind of bathroom facilities? Are you doing that? They're not getting out of their car, right? If someone has to go to the bathroom, how do you?
I, I think you have to put some sort of, some sort of facility on there for people to use, especially if people are coming all from all over Long Island. Uh, you know, you could have an hour, hour and a half, two hour car ride, and then, you know, you get there and there's not really that much around there to use, so.
I, I understand.
You have to provide something.
Well, there is a pavilion on the property that which can, which does have full bathrooms, like, uh.
What do you mean pavilion? A structure or a building?
They have a building on the property, which is a permanent building.
Can't use that.
Okay, well, we can bring sporta potties in. That's, and that's no issue.
Then you're gonna have to amend your, your site plan and, and put the sporta potties on it?
That's, that's no problem.
Uh, question. Sure. And here you state that they're driving on paved roads. Uh, so they're just coming in and around the parking lot area? Or they're driving around the, what used to be the golf course?
It's used, what used to be the golf course. So they're following the perimeter around the golf course, the fairways are quite located. Yeah, the, the fairways are the old golf course are where the displays are set up.
And it's wide enough for the cars to?
Uh, yeah, we, we've taken cars down there. It's, we're not, uh, there's no buses coming this way. We're not welcoming buses to this display. It's gonna be passing the vehicle, but it's definitely wide enough.
Craig, what about E M Ts on facility? Do you need any of those?
They're just driving through, so they probably, they shouldn't be.
What about emergency access roads?
Uh, that they can, Dean has submitted something, which I've asked the fire chief to take a look at, to see if it's adequate for his, his use for his equipment and still waiting to get back. But that's, uh, probably what we'll end up doing, uh, as long as he keeps it clear. Otherwise, they'll end up having to use the, um, you know, the main entrance coming in. And it'll be up to the people there to make sure that, uh, it's cleared for any ambulance, police, or fire department apparatus.
If that's the only thing that I'm concerned about is because if you have a queue line that's coming in to the light show, and then you have all the people that are coming through that are leaving, like, that, that passage is gonna be blocked by emergency services. Which is why we've had problems with this particular site with events taking place there. And that recommendations have been made by fire prevention and by, by fire marshal and by other, uh, planning staff and planning department in town that are concerned about emergency access when they have the big events and where people are actually parking the cars.
Well, I, I hear that point, and I think it's a big point. Um, one of the things I can say is, we actually have, uh, again, if you look at the maps, where the show terminates and ends is directly opposite. It, it's approximately opposite. It's a loop essentially.
Yep.
So what we can do is, we will have staff situated there. So in the event there is an emergency, you can cut off the exit traffic. It would basically create a small backup at the end of the light show, but it would be no threat to anybody, and we can keep that path open. So if they're needed to bring in, you know, in the event of anything even serious, like a medevac helicopter, you have an open parking lot, which there's no vehicles parked in, and we'll have plenty of, you know, open area.
I think I'm more worried about fire, fire trucks.
Again, the exit area is gonna be kept open, and it's a constant flow of traffic. We're not expecting anything more than at absolute most, two or three vehicles a minute passing through there. So, you know, mov- moving vehicles off of the side street. Well, I'll say this, again, my opinion is, my opinion is that even given the large volume of larger shows that have gone, you know, that have been done in much more populated areas, we're, we're not even, you know, they'll maybe do double that. So even then, we're not talking about massive amounts of traffic. We still would never have a backup. So there is a lot of buffer in this.
Up first year.
Uh, not in the first year. And, and, and in respect to your, to your statement, I think it's a very good point. But one of the things we could do to mitigate that is if somebody is leaving through the exit and we didn't bring the fire truck, we'd stop traffic there. It would cut off and there's an entire open, you know, side of traffic. The, the traffic coming in, there's only one vehicle lane. There aren't two. So there's wide enough for two vehicles to pass on that road. We'd keep that other lane open. There's a fire truck, stop traffic there, bring everything in that needs to get through.
Yeah, but what I'm concerned about the people that are traveling through the loop. And if there's a fire here, like, where are you gonna stop the people? You know what I'm saying? So that the fire trucks can come through here. You're not gonna block them on the property so that you can leave the lane open for the fire trucks to get through.
Well, I'll say this. If there was to be a situation with any of the displays, which I, I'm assuming that's what you're referring to.
Yes.
First of all, just so you know, these displays are all LED. They're not high wattage. Um, there, there's never been any incidents with this company we work with in terms of that. But to your point, uh, if there was a fire, we would usher the vehicles through. We would stop vehicles from entering the property. And we would, we could use the parking lot, turn vehicles around that are on the waiting line to get them in and out, get them back out the exit. The fire truck follows them in. So there's plenty of room to maneuver the traffic that will be here.
So if your outcome is greater than expected, where you're expecting two to three cars coming in at a time or, uh, whatever.
We're expecting a flow of about, at, at most, at most, two to three cars a minute.
Two to three cars a minute. So with the fifteen hundred feet of the roadway to get in, so, you know, that's quite a few cars. Are you, are they proposing to have somebody at the entrance to keep the flow of traffic from the people that are traveling on Edwards Avenue?
That's what I mentioned, didn't I?
A- a- as I said, we'll have our staff on property doing one of, you know, doing two functions. Number one is manning the ticket booth and controlling the flow of cars so they're evenly spaced out. And secondly, we'll have somebody ushering the cars into the queue. So they'll be following that.
I haven't seen the, the ticket booth. Ticket booth is up where the club house used to be?
They're, they'll be put on there. They're cassone, they're cassone trailer ticket booths, um, you know, like the metal, uh.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're not.
This is empty.
Yeah, the, the, the black and white map kinda hides it.
Well, maybe we could put a condition in the resolution that should the police be called because of backup, that we would, we would require their assistance, that you would have to pay for it. We would give, we would send an invoice. Once you receive the invoice, you need to pay that.
And that would be fine.
Police personnel and, and vehicle users.
That would be fine. And I, I. Yeah, yeah. Oh, hi, how are you? Yes, we had, I was about to say, we previously discussed that, and I said, uh, honestly.
I'll make it a condition that if it should warrant it, then.
If it warrants it, absolutely.
I, 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 I'll be honest with you, um, I, I don't think we will.
I, I would agree with you on that.
I see the distance, 'cause I know the golf course very well when they used to do that, but, but, um, for that to affect that with that, well, that's a phenomenal amount of cost. I don't think you'd.
I would say honestly, I think this would be a wonderful tradition for Riverhead if it is truly bringing that many vehicles someday. But I, I would say, this will not happen the first year. But, but I do agree, if it is necessary, it's absolutely necessary. So we'll make every, every reasonable effort to make sure it isn't. And that's part of us providing that extra fifteen hundred feet of backup. But as, uh, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Jim.
Uh, as Jim had said, um, thank you, uh, it would be a phenomenal turnout if that was to be the case.
Because that would charge per car, what it'd be like.
I was just gonna ask that. What do you, what is the entrance fee for this?
It's twenty-three dollars per car online, and it's twenty-five at the door. And it's also worth noting that we've extended an offer to more than a hundred not-for-profits. That if they wanna sell the tickets, we're giving a portion of the ticket price to those not-for-profits. Part of Bold Broadcasting's, uh, event strategy is whenever we ticket at events, we usually would be buffering there. So if a not-for-profit wants to passively raise income, they can offer our tickets at a, it's the same cheap as great they can offer them. And we'll give a percentage of that ticket back to the organization. Stony Brook Children's Hospital is part of that, and so is, uh, the YMCA.
Uh, so, so when you sell tickets, are you selling tickets for a particular day? So you'll, you'll have an idea, will you sell at? You know, if you have, uh, an abundance of people buying tickets on a particular day, are you limited with the number of tickets on a particular day? Or you just sell, sort of says a general admission for the whole timeframe that you're?
We're offering it for the entire timeframe. Um, but what we are doing is that if it does become an issue, we have contact information to people, emails, et cetera. So we can, part of the condition is we can say to them, you know, if we're really backed up, we'll say, you're gonna have to use it for the day. But I'll be honest with you, again, given the amount of space we have on the property, and even if we were to sell, you know, if, if we had six or seven thousand cars roll through there over the course of the season, you're still talking about one or two cars a minute. It, it's nowhere near that level.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think more of the concern is particular days, you know, as you get closer.
I understand.
As you get closer to, to December. But we should have a better idea than if we need a police presence, uh, presence at that time.
I would also just say, I'd like, uh, you know, deferring to, uh, to a professional's advice here, uh, given, we're working with a company, they said, in Massachusetts, that's bringing in the displays. And their advice to, uh, to our company was basically, uh, the two weeks leading up to Christmas, you'll have your, your, elevate your bulk, your pop, if you wanna call it. And, uh, you know, e- even in their experience, they did, this company actually produced a show in Brookhaven, uh, at the Holtzville Ecology Center a number of years ago. And their first year, they had a, uh, different, different organization. Uh, they had, I think, five or seven thousand vehicles, and that was very good turnout. I mean, you know, this is not, given the population density and proximity to this, we're gonna be doing a lot of work up island to bring people to Riverhead. But I can tell you that Jones Beach, which is buried in, you know, the thick of, you know, Nassau Suffolk, et cetera, um, they're getting maybe, they're, they are totally opposite of us. They're getting probably fifty thousand cars. We're not, we'd be lucky if we got a fifth of that. And, and that's just based upon the fact that the, the population is proportionately, um, i- i- it's minimal compared to what they're dealing with, so.
But it is easily accessible off the expressway.
And that's a wonderful thing.
With the five o'clock start time and the six o'clock start time, I just worry about, um, you know, I see Edwards Avenue, how it backs up north once you get to twenty-five, because a lot of people are coming to that heavily populated area to get home from work. You know, they get off four, get five, and then they get off the expressway. And so I'm thinking that it's a concern of mine, just getting people off of the Long Island Expressway to head northbound on Edwards Avenue, that there might need to be some traffic control there if the tra- cars back up onto the exit ramp on the expressway at exit seventy-one, and then also at Edw- Edwards Avenue for people that are coming home from work that live in Riverhead north of twenty-five and in that area. And then your people that are coming to this site and them waiting to make a left turn 'cause of the traffic going south. So I'm, I'm concerned about that intersection right there. And it's something that's been discussed before with other projects that have come through the planning department with projects that are proposed on Edwards Avenue and traffic studies that have been done in the past that reflect that those could potentially be problems, so.
One of my, one of my feelings here, just to remind everybody, is this is during the winter and it is a colder time. So a lot of the traffic, I mean, that, the, Riverhead is wonderfully set up in a lot of ways because we do have large attractions like Squish Splash that are bringing way more people in any given time than we'll ever come close to. So a lot of the infrastructure concerns, I would say, especially regards to the L I E, I would say they probably are, in my opinion, are not probably the biggest concerns, especially considering the fact that, given the amount of time that we're having the show open, there's no urgency to show up on this day at this time.
Mm-hmm.
So a- again, police presence as necessary, I don't think that's unreasonable.
Okay.
Obviously, public interests are first. But I do think that when you weigh the pros and the cons versus what we're actually expecting, it, it shouldn't be too much demand on the infrastructure.
And it, it probably won't be an issue either, but.
I could see if there was like one show at five o'clock.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree. I agree. And that's why we made so many days to avoid any rush to be there.
If it snows.
If it snows.
What's your contingency if it snows?
We're plowing, uh, we're gonna plow the roads as soon as we can get them open safely. So if it does snow, we'll be plowing the pathways. Again, it's a paved path. We'll be plowing, plowing the pathway out, clearing up the entrances. And we won't be open, obviously, if there's snow on the ground.
So you have a contingency for that, yeah, right?
Well, if you wanna walk there, you're welcome.
And then one other thing, I know that you were about supporting some of the local businesses also. I don't know if you've reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, especially if you're having a ticket booth there just to cross-market some of the, the restaurants and things that we have going on in town would be, would be probably a, a nice cross-marketing for everybody.
One of the things we had done is, and I can say this because I, I was told I can say this, the Riverhead B I D and, um, the Chamber of Commerce are both very strongly in support of this event, um, predominantly because of the fact that it is winter. And, you know, Tanger Outlets are wonderful to bring people. But this is a great draw. It's a great attraction. And obviously, there aren't that many things going on anywhere on Long Island during the winter in terms of events. So this is a great draw. Uh, in terms of the businesses on Main Street, it's wonderful because the time of this event, as you had mentioned, ideally, people will come here, bring their family, and then go shopping or.
Oh, sure.
Or show up and have dinner somewhere on Main Street. And it, it's a good benefit to businesses that could, honestly, it's really good.
Come to the bar, yeah.
I think it's great. I just think that, you know, I'm happy that we'll put the reserve in there, but if we do need traffic control, that we will be paying.
I, I would, I'd be honest with you, I would love to see that, um, at least in my opinion, I would love to see that that many people wanted to come to Riverhead. That'd be a good sign for a lot of things. But I'd be honest with you, I don't think, especially coming off the L I E, if there was to be any traffic control needed, it would be Edwards Avenue. I cannot imagine that the infrastructure coming off the L I E.
Oh, would not be possible.
Would be a good, but it'd, honestly, I, I humbly say it would really be a good thing if that many people wanted to come for everybody. I wouldn't mind paying for it 'cause it means everybody's, hopefully the businesses are making money, we're making money. Everybody's happy.
Doing well from it in the slow time of year.
It would be, that would honestly be a blessing in a lot of ways, I think, to a lot of people.
To address, uh, Jody's concern earlier, uh, part of the resolution is that they'll, they'll have to submit an outdoor public safety plan. At which point, you know, in that, we will be addressing emergency vehicle access as well as weather conditions, snow and so forth in the communities and plans for emergency access should it be snow.
And, and the biggest thing I'd say to that is, we're gonna make sure that that exit lane, again, we're not expecting such a flow of traffic that we couldn't move vehicles. But if we needed to, we would choke the traffic coming out of the light show, allow there to be a backup on that end, and get the fire trucks in or ambulances or whatever is necessary coming into the, the exit lane.
Okay, very good.
What is, do you know the name of the electric company that I'm hoping to get this shipping insurance from?
I, I can't tell you because we have a couple of companies bidding right now to, to do it.
But you'll do that?
Uh, yes, of course.
I mean, the resolution I prepared, I'm supposed to have all of this, um, requested with a conditional information, no longer than September seventeenth. Are you okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay.
We'll get you our insurance. Uh, as I had mentioned previously, there's a limited pool of insurance for specialty events like this. We have the same problem with our higher balloon events. So I, I said that, because given the, the size of the premium, we just didn't wanna pay it until.
I, I get it. We got to return it to them.
But that's fine. We can get that to you right away.
Okay. And there's no rides or inflatable entertainment, nothing like that?
Inflatables, no rides, nothing. Just nice beautiful display.
Spike side or anything.
You know the Riverhead sidehouse.
There you go. Good answer.
Never been, never have it out.
Very good answer.
You don't need liquor liability.
Don't look at my car.
Any other questions from anybody? So is the sense that to move forward with, with this application?
I think it'd be a nice, nice, could, like I said, other than the holiday bonfire and the lion's butt parade for Christmas, I don't think we do like that.
I, I think, I think it's, it's, it's wonderful. I think that, you know, we need, we need family entertainment here. And I think that it's, it's a, uh, it's a good bonus for the area, so.
I hope this could become a tradition for Riverhead. You can, uh, everybody can look forward to coming out here for the holidays. Make that a nice thing. Oh, I'll be having you for it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
And what's the company you're with? Is it?
Bold Broadcasting.
Bold? And that's all part of W E L J or whatever?
Uh, Bold Broadcasting, Home Stuff, W E L J, and Bold Entertainment.
Are you gonna be doing the automobile race too? Is that your guess?
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Excellent.
Uh, next up is Total Technology.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Now y'all bear it.
Been a little long this morning. A little hot out there, but.
Yeah, a little bit. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Mr. Ruthon, how are you, sir?
All right, once again, we're being filmed, so I'll just have you guys introduce yourself.
Ben Tedesco, CEO of Total Technology Solutions.
Tom Mavola, Senior Network Engineer at Total Technology Solutions.
Christopher Petty?
All right, so this is, you guys have, have been going through our system. Um, you came in here in the beginning of the year and, and you, uh, requested to, uh, go through everything. And then you were gonna come back and give us a report and an update of all the wonderful things in our I T that's going on in town. Um, so, go ahead.
So we inherited the network in January, because we started. And, uh, there've been some lagging issues with, uh, with the network from when we came in. So with several attempts of trying to figure out what, uh, the lagging issues were, whether it was the internet, the hardware, the memory, so on and so forth, a bunch of technical, smaller guys and I and gals, uh, really spent a lot of time, probably a hundred hours, investigating what the problem is. And, and the problem really comes down to that you've outgrown your network. There's nothing that we can do to increase the speed and productivity of your existing network. It's about five years old. When you got it, it was fine. Um, it just outgrew it. So at this point, we've come up with a couple of recommendations and/or options to replace the existing network to get the, get rid of the lag and have people be productive at their desktops as opposed to your I T staff continuously trying to put Band-Aids on all of these issues, day in and day out, and, uh, and get back to the business of running the town as opposed to trying to fix a problem that really can't be fixed.
So what's our current capacity that we ha- that we have there about for, for a number of users?
So what's our current capacity that we ha- that we have there about for, for a number of users? Or what should it be?
You, you're, you have ab- about roughly a hundred and fifty users, Paul, right? Um, and the applications that are running, uh, how, how many, how many servers are there running?
Thirty?
Well, there's about twenty, twenty-five servers, but some of that is dedicated to running the virtual infrastructure.
Okay.
So, probably about twelve line of business out, servers that run. The courts, accounting, Microsoft, the Office, your word, uh, Exchange is running on the cloud for email, which is great. But, day to day, you've got too many applications running, too many users running on your existing infrastructure, and everything we've looked at and determined that we would even run software on it to see what's happening, how much traffic throughput. Uh, we've had Dell involved, we've had H P involved, E N C is part of Dell as well, um, uh, software, virtual.
The M one.
The M where, correct. Um, so we've had them all involved, all look at their particular components on the network, and run applications or software tests, and what we've done and what they've done is basically, it's time. So we've got a couple of options for you to listen to. We're not here with hardcore costs. We're here with sort of, uh, roundabout budget costs to let you guys hear what we have to say, so you can decide, uh, based on what we have discovered. And we've put a lot of time and effort into it, so the options we're gonna give you, um, are good options, and, and, uh.
Cheap options?
Well, let's, let's, let's just say that.
Don't get carried away.
Let's, let's, let's say cost effective has, has that for a good word.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right.
So, one of the options is gonna be on-premise with what you currently have, with what they call a hyper-converged type of, uh, server. And what does that mean to you? It means that it's the latest and greatest technology for a large environment. Town of Riverhead is not a, you know, twenty-person law firm.
So what would be considered a large environment, over seventy or?
Yeah, I, uh, over a hundred, you got a hundred and fifty, you, you know, are you, are you super large? No, it's not three hundred, five hundred, five thousand, but, um, you're, you're considered a.
Medium, yeah, okay.
You know, I would consider you a medium. Um, you know, not, not much different than most of the larger towns or cities that we deal with, such as, uh, uh, East Hampton or Garden City or Glencoe. And then on the smaller side, you would look at, uh, Villages of Avlon or Lindbrook or Old Brookville, that would be on the small side. So, one of the options is gonna be on-premise, with this hyper-converged, it's what Suffolk County is going to. Okay, so Suffolk County's going to hyper-converge, it's what Drummond uses, it allows you to grow, uh, with existing hardware that we put in place, and as time goes on, and using the existing workstations.
When you say existing hardware, just, what does that refer, what does that refer to?
Existing hardware, I, I'm considering right now is your desktops, your thin clients, they're called. There's zero thin clients, meaning there's no hard drive in them. It's normal memory. You're really just going out to your server and bringing the application sort of on a web-based.
Okay.
System, okay? So, so option one, and I'm not saying that's our best option, just because it's the first option, I'm just saying option one is on-prem, and option two is gonna be on the cloud.
All right, so, just stepping back a second. So we have, we have fiber optics coming into the building.
Correct, all the buildings are.
Right, and then that comes to, that goes to where? Are there swi- you know, how is that, and where is that?
So, pretty much terminated at two hundred hour.
Okay.
That's where your internet is, and that, and then from there, it's going to twelve ninety-five Pulaski, which is actually where the servers reside.
That's the redundant C site.
That's the redundant C site, but that's where, right, the internet. If the town lost, two hundred lost internet, you fell over and go out to twelve ninety-five. But all the infrastructure that we're discussing resides at twelve ninety-five town.
Okay.
So your data, your storage, everything is there.
But what, I guess what I'm asking is, is where that's stored, that, the mechanics of that, that's fine, or no?
No.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I'm at. That, is that what you're saying, is five years old and?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's the actual physical.
Hardware.
Hardware that's there.
That's where all of your applications and your data is stored, other than your internet. Yeah, that's, that's basically. That's what you have in twelve ninety-five. Right, that's what you have, exactly right. Um, so it's, 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 see, there's better days, um, you know, we, we, we experienced it probably for at least, I'm guessing, over a year.
Okay. So then, so then, okay, so now, we're, 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 you're discussing, so what you're saying now as far as, is this option one?
Yeah, option one is to stay, uh, with the hardware locally, or on-premice. And then option two, we're gonna call it a cloud solution, but we're also gonna call it a hybrid solution. I'll tell you why. And if it gets too technical, Paul, I'll tell you why. Um, but, so, so if we came in with this hyper-converged infrastructure.
And this is option one?
Option one, that would be replacing your existing file server, your existing hardware.
So is it, is it adding to it or is it replacing the whole thing?
Replacing.
Replacing the whole thing, okay.
Re- replacing the whole thing, exactly right. Um, and we would migrate all of the data over, all of the information, and we'd come in the next day, and everybody would not experience a lag anymore, but see a, a huge difference.
And this would increase capacity to what le- level of users?
It's the software. It increases capacity for the software. I mean, being able to download the software and having the software run efficiently and effectively.
Well.
So, so if, if.
That, I'm sorry. You would have all these, all of this hardware in place, it would, it would have room for growth as if you increased users. It also has room to expand by as many users as you ever had. So if you had, if you doubled the town, and you, you bought the Southampton town, and you said, we now have three hundred users, this would be able to handle it, by throwing more hardware at it. But you wouldn't have to, we wouldn't be sitting here right now and saying, let's replace the server. This, this hyper-converged infrastructure allows you to grow if you grow, as far as capacity and, uh, and users. As far as capacity, it has a twenty percent ru- of growth.
Okay, so it's a twenty percent.
Right now, current.
Right, okay.
So what Suffolk County's trying to do with this, they're trying to get you guys, different towns and villages within Suffolk County, to operate off of their on-prem.
Their main server.
Unit. They want you to pay them.
Share services.
For, if you have Suffolk County P D instead of your own P D, pay them for space on their, on their private cloud. They're gonna call it a private cloud Suffolk County, so.
A private public cloud.
A private public cloud. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, it does, but it's, I get it with the cloud-based systems and the, with the shared services, as far as technology, though, that concerns me, as far as privacy.
We're not doing, we're not going to Suffolk County, not recommending it. You guys are gonna get, either you're on-prem, or option two is gonna be a true cloud environment.
That's, that's with this one. With this one, where is the, where is the backup located on this? It's all maintained here on-site?
You're gonna have a, yeah. So it will, you will have a local backup here as well. This device at the bottom has the ability to, off-site, to bi-coastal data centers. So, main data center in the running place of Pennsylvania, the other one's slightly.
And that's a user fee, you do that for the backup? Is that, that's a separate? If you do, you keep your backup somewhere else, that's another contract that you do?
Yeah, it's included in, in the, in the, in the price quotes that we give you. So, what happens with this data backup, if you stayed on-premice, it backs up locally here in Riverhead. It has the capability, if, if, if crashed, if your server crashed, we could actually spin it up as a server as, as well. If you lost the building, then we'd go up to the cloud, and you'd access the server in the cloud in, uh, Pennsylvania. We don't refer to it as a backup. It's a business continuity device. Okay, so it's disaster recovery built into your backup solution.
I like that.
Yeah.
I like that one.
Okay. So that's, we'll get a little more tactical on that in a minute, if we follow. And then, um, option two is the hybrid solution, which is a true cloud. And what does that mean? That means that you're incorporating, uh, business continuity immediately. You don't have this hardware in Riverhead anymore. Everything is accessed on the cloud. That would be in, uh, Austin, Texas, with, uh, a redundant site in Vegas. You would have people come in in the morning, and they would see if you go to this page here, which, uh, they're not numbered, unfortunately, but I think it's about five or six pages. In, you'll see a colorful little, okay? So you come in in the morning, and what the end user's gonna see is what you allow them to see, and that's it. Okay, so they have access to accounting, they have access to Microsoft Office, they have access to the court software. That's it. There's no surfing the web, there's no Facebook, there's nothing else but this.
Oh, how was that?
Okay, it's called workspace.
That's it, your workspace, your workspace application.
I need my Facebook, sorry.
Well, you can get permission for your Facebook there.
We give you permission, a lawyer. Uh, but, if I'm interested, so this is similar to where we are right now with A D P and Microsoft Office three sixty-five. Okay, so if something happened, we can go to the library potentially and still work on those two, or your phone, work on those two applications. That's what this would get you. So, this here is what they would see in the morning. You could put it on your phone, put it through your phone. You could work from home, log in, get the same exact screen, you could work from vacation. You're accessing the cloud, the cloud is backing up. Your future savings is true business continuity. This is not a backup. It's two sites with the exact same data, okay? Does it do a Snapchat with backups as well? Yes, it does. But this is true business continuity, once you go to the cloud. It's hard to wrap around, you know, the idea of putting all your data up on the cloud, but you're already doing it now with Office three sixty-five.
With the emails.
People, you know, townships and businesses are going through the cloud. We have every application we run on the cloud, redundant, this exact scenario. So, our building, God forbid, we couldn't access it for whatever reason, we would work from wherever. Home, hotel, Hilton, the Hilton, Hilton, uh, next door, or whatever. Um, so your business continuity, your security increases tenfold because this company, Never Fail, is a, um, tier-four platinum cloud provider. So they're on the same par or same, uh, uh, level as a Microsoft or a Salesforce. Bless it. They, they guarantee you a hundred percent uptime, not ninety-nine, nine-nine-nine, it's a hundred percent uptime. So there are great advantages to, to bless it, to the cloud. You, you're never paying for maintenance again on hardware. Okay, you're never paying for, um, for upgrades. You can add more space by simply, it's, it's almost like an appliance, like electrical water. If you need more water in the summer, 'cause you gotta fill your pool, you need more data for the town for the summer 'cause you're busy, you tune it up, and you tune it down, wrench it up, wrench it down. That's, that's the beauty behind the cloud.
How, how long has this Never Be- Never Fail, this Never Fail Works, how long's this company been in business?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but we'll find out. They, they are one of the largest tier-four platinum data centers, but I don't know how long they've been in business.
Okay. And they do gov- mostly government entities also, or?
They do, um, yeah, they do financial institutions, like a J P Morgan will, will host in there. Um, government, government agencies, who, who, you, um, at, at the lead of being a government agency, you go to the cloud. You, you really would, I'm just being honest with you. Um, you know, other than Office three sixty-five, you take a look at, um, you know, a, a police department, they may not want to do that because of, uh, of, uh, seizure's compliance and, and things like that, but they are compliant, they're, they're HIPAA compliant, um, SOAR compliant. I mean, you can get reports from them. There's, there's no, um, there's really no downside except for, um, except for one downside, and that's, that's the fact that you'd have to replace your five-year-old existing thin clients at the desktop to go to the cloud, because it would need internet access from the desktop. Now, they're five years old now.
What are you replacing at the de- the desktop?
Each desktop would have to be replaced. So they're, they were also purchased in, in, in about two thousand thirteen.
And, and why do they need to be replaced exactly? They don't have the.
They don't have, um, they don't have internet access. There's no hard drive in them. They're, they're, they're what they call zero clients, thin clients, yeah, I did. So, they, you need to get to the cloud, you need that, you need that internet access.
At each particular desktop?
Right. Now, the upside, or I don't know what side you wanna call this, they're five years old anyway. They're gonna have to be eventually replaced anyway. You probably wouldn't replace them now in two thousand eighteen or nineteen. You might go off to two thousand twenty. That's the one downside to this scenario.
They need to do it on a lease agreement.
Absolutely.
I mean, nobody buys them anymore.
A- absolutely, you know. Even option one, lease option. The numbers that we put in here on page one are.
Hundred forty thousand places.
So.
You're seeing fourteen thousand a month, that's the, uh, lease price for the, um, hyper-converged, um, hosted on-prem server. And then down below, you'll see twelve thousand, some other numbers as well, roughly thirteen thousand a month for the cloud version.
And, and this would be repla- replacing a hundred fifty desktops? Is, is that what we're talking about, the hundred fifty?
Correct.
And what about the, the laptops, things like that? Are those accounted for in our numbers?
I think all of these is accounted for. Yeah, although, these things are a separate device to get to the cloud.
Right.
So you don't need a thin client. You can sit at your desk and do the thin client, or you can bring these in here.
And then just use them as, okay.
Yeah, they don't have to be replaced, 'cause they have hard drives in.
Okay.
Your, uh, your laptops. So basically, a laptop, a phone, your home computer, or your desktop in the office will all be able to access. You know, with proper security and dual authentication and so on and so forth.
That, that's the other thing for this company, as far as the cloud goes, can you, uh, it's putting it to the cloud, if, say, if we decided a year from now, we needed another level of security on our information, can they, can that be, uh, put in place? Or is this, you kinda have to go with what they have there, and that's where you're at?
You can add security as, as, as much as you want from your, your own I T.
So be added from here, from our I T here, and then it would be, it would, it would preempt going to the cloud, whatever, or how does that work?
We would, uh, we would go over with your I T staff, but, you know, if you wanted your own, um, dual authentication as far as security, so what we do here at my office is we have our password, like everybody does, and we force a change every thirty days, which gets everybody upset because. Forty-seven passwords. And we don't do that anymore. You know what we do now? We do, so I have a password, right? I put my password in, Arizona's sour iced tea. And then, uh, and then I have a four-digit number that I know, one, two, three, four. Whatever it is, that's consistent to me. But then I can't log on. Oh, I get no, uh, I get no social. See that? It works similarly to an RSA, RSA token, you make it from a bank, something. So every time I go to log on, I have, I have to have my phone, I press the icon, and a different, uh, uh, eight-digit number comes up. Use your PIN for sixty seconds. That PIN.
Oh, I get that when I do a banking.
Right. So that PIN then allows us to get, log on to our computer. Without that PIN, the four-digit PIN is consistent, and then that PIN, uh, changes every sixty seconds. So you can't, that's it, that's rock solid. Somebody would have to steal your phone, use your fingerprint, cut your thumb off, know your four-digit code, and, and know your password to get into your computer as well. You can't get better than that. Dual authentication.
I guess that, so.
One, two, three, four, pass that.
Our town attorney's office has a separate server.
There are all this, the SOC level, I S O level.
So, so the other question is, is, is if you do go with a particular company through your cloud base, what kind of, what, it's a contract that you sign with them for your cloud-based services for a particular time, and then you can switch, say, if you decide two years or five years later that you, that you wanna be somewhere else, um, that's not an issue?
We could do that, yes. We have a, we're a reseller for them, we're a managed service provider, uh, but we could, it's like any other, um, offering that we have. We do switch at times. Things get better, and we decide that, you know, a, a private equity firm comes in and bought our, uh, Casaya, which is our software for managing remotely, and when they were purchased a couple of years ago, their service went downhill, and so we, we switched. And so we switch.
It's in the contract.
It's in the contract. Uh, uh, yeah, we're not tied to anybody. You're not tied to us either.
No, I'm just, I'm just kinda curious, like, you know, with the difficulty in managing, if, if everything is, is.
Yeah, we, we, we could, we, we could switch at any time if we felt the need to, and their service orders.
I sort, I sorta like the hybrid solution myself, personally, but I'm, I'm, what's the difference in the, in, in the outlay now, what we know could be having all that, to what we'd like to do?
Well, to purchase all of this, if we were doing it where we were still hosting it and ha- and purchasing all new equipment.
This is option one you're talking about?
Yes, we, we really can't afford in our budget to buy it all this year, even if we combined it with next year's budget, so we would lease it at that point, okay? Um, we would lease it over five years, uh, and, and then we would wanna compare that to what it would be for an annual cost in the cloud. Even if we have an annual cost, of course, whether we replace the backbone of all this, uh, we still have to replace these thin clients every so often, whether.
Even if we have an annual cost, of course, whether we replace the backbone of all this, uh, we still have to replace these thin clients every so often, whether it's five years, like we're doing now, or six years, or, or seven or eight years, because that's how long they last, we'd have to replace those. So, we would be kinda um, married to a uh, a cloud cost every year, and however often we replace. Now, I don't think we necessarily have to replace them all in the same year, we may be able to, when we replace the thin clients in the future, do it over two or three year, but those are the costs that we have, but we have those replacement of thin clients anyway.
You know, I already mentioned what the hybrid solution is and why. So, you're running AutoCAD and GIS, that's very resource intensive, lots of data, lots of calculations, and so on and so forth. So, what we would do in a hybrid um, solution is, we would have those users host their data locally and repurpose your existing hardware. So, we would not throw that hardware out, we would repurpose it, it's perfectly fine for that, and we would have those fifteen users, they would have more capacity on their desktops, with a hard drive, more memory to run the AutoCAD. It just doesn't make sense, we went back and forth with um, several folks from an engineering perspective, as far as running AutoCAD in the cloud, it's not worth the money. There are big graphic boards that would have to be hosted specifically for your CAD users. So, we would continue to use your existing infrastructure just for the AutoCAD and GIS users, and give them decent desktops, instead of spending eight hundred dollars on a desktop, closer to twenty-five hundred dollars.
And then how does that interface with the rest of the departments then?
Seamless, nobody knows what and where it's coming from. It's going, if you go to Microsoft, or if you're going to Neverfail, and, and you don't know.
Okay.
Seamless.
So, the fact that our town attorney's office has a separate server, because a lot of the documents that are in the town attorney's office are confidential, and, you know, we have union employees, which is why they have a separate server, and they have an outside agency that supports that server. So, how would that work with this um, cloud-based solution?
So, if it would be secure, if they would only have access, they would be the only ones with access to their information.
Okay.
On the cloud, but if they came back, or your courts came back and said, no way, we're not ready for this, then we would just host it on your existing server, which we, we, we're gonna do anyway with the AutoCAD. So, we could still host certain applications locally, if the department was completely against it.
And, and what would be the upgrade that has to happen to the server too, or you feel the server that we have has the capacity to build in new programs?
We're, we're taking ninety percent of what you're using it for.
Away, putting it in the cloud.
And so now it's got that much more capacity and more.
And what's the re- redundancy on our server now?
Your re- your redundancy is, is uh, using Bean software, right?
Well, redundancy for what you have right now in a, to, you have five servers that.
You know what I'm talking about?
You have five servers that are responsible for hosting all your virtual servers and desktops. So, if one of the servers were to fail, VMware would automatically fail over to another host, move everything from one to another, and you really, the end user wouldn't see that thing.
Okay.
So, VMware's run here at the, at the town, it's also run here in the hybrid cloud that we would propose the option to.
Okay.
It's the same VMware backup, uh, backend.
Okay. So, that's what I'm saying, so if we were, if we were to do, keep some of them, this, the current still needs to be replaced, or?
Eventually, it's not.
Okay, so, so, but what would be, when would this need to, if, say if you just had the, the, the AutoCAD and, and a couple of the?
We wouldn't, you wouldn't need something that big.
Right, so this, this, so, but this is, this is.
Just to get you a couple, two, two years.
That's what I'm wondering, so two, three years on this one, okay.
Now, understand that the redundancy you currently have in place is in the same building.
Oh, yeah, so, so if something happens.
So, it's not a cloud environment, you know, something happens, um, you could be in trouble, right?
Yeah.
Like, what we would recommend, um, is, if you look down here, you see this thing says Datto?
Mm-hmm.
We'd probably recommend a small Datto for here as well.
So, you could do Datto, so it's still, it would still be, this is the one that goes cloud-based to, so.
And we could, correct, yeah. And that's, so you'd be in Pennsylvania, you'd be wherever Microsoft is, you'd be in Vegas and Austin.
And that expense wouldn't be that big to back that, that up, because you're not storing it, it's just the.
No, and that would be scaled down.
Scaled down, okay.
Yeah. So, that answers your question as far as.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. So, Neverfail Workspace, when you get, if you go to the back here, it will show you.
Neverfail is part of the hybrid solution.
Correct. It will show you all the different types, and if you go to the very back at a glance, the second to last page, you'll see all of the types of security that's in place. There, there's.
Right.
There's, there's more money thrown at cybersecurity for Neverfail than your town, my company, or any small business could possibly throw at. You know, the city of Atlanta got hacked, right? Laecorps just got hacked, like the last week or week four. These are, these are companies that are throwing tens of millions of dollars at, at infrastructure. So, the security for a company that's in the business of hosting data for government, financial institutions, you know, so on and so forth, is, is going to go over and beyond watching your network and making sure that it's secure. Not that you're getting rid of your firewall here locally, we're gonna go firewall to firewall, it's a private, retro private network, so.
And that's what, that's what I was asking, so there's no restrictions on what we have here?
No. I think on this call, you.
I got it.
From a technical perspective. It's about to digest.
So, the hybrid, hybrid solution, all desktops needs to be, all desktops need to be replaced?
Correct. Which can be leased with the option of buy, obviously. Um, you know, and currently, if you stay on-prem, you don't have to do that immediately, but sooner rather than later, because you got five years on it.
And that's my other question, can you, if, if you're, if you're switching over, you would switch over all at once, can you switch over department by department to go into the, into the uh, cloud? Say if you would go to Neverfail, could you do it in, could you do it in phase, say phase one, phase two, say if you took the police department and, and the attorney's office went off cloud with them first, and then switch off? So, you could phase that, phase that in, but you'd have to change the, the laptops.
Those desktops.
All would have to be changed to be interfaced.
Right.
In those departments or all over?
No, the police, say we did, just the police department, they're accessing um, you know, a records management system, who dispatches Suffolk, could you guys do it?
Yeah, we have our own dispatch.
So, you dispatch, are you running um, Impact, you know what you're running, as far as this software now?
Police department, I mean, justice court, I mean, and um, I'm talking about not parties, these, these departments, they're, they're not, they're not part of it all.
They don't want, okay.
They're, they're not part of this.
Yeah, I, I.
So, they would, they, so, they would stay in-house?
I'm, I'm not sure why.
We have, we have a keeping for that end to this, or whatever's here is the existing, uh, the, the structure.
Do, why don't you come up for a se- for a second, please?
I don't know why we wouldn't.
Is that?
Police departments get real, real antsy with this.
Yeah.
Like, you have to keep them separate for uh, other reasons, well, seizures compliance, like criminal justice information systems. You, you gotta, you gotta segment it out, not that they can't go to the cloud, they really can.
So, this is just for all other, all this, these numbers are really just for all departments minus who?
Police.
Police?
Justice court.
Justice court. And town attorney.
This is highway, sewer, border municipal.
So, it's police, justice, and town attorney?
No, no, justice is partners.
Yeah, okay.
Town attorney is.
Just attorney?
I'm sorry.
So, but all of those, or, but they, so they would, they have, what, computers do they have, they have the, the uh?
They have their own domain.
No, no, but do they have, do they have the um?
Desktop.
Desktops, would they have, desktops with hard drive, or they have desktops with?
Yeah.
They have desktops with hard drive right now?
Right, and they have, they're, they're not on VMware, they have their own server, they have their own computer room, they have their own rack, they're completely separate from us.
They have a service here, you know.
Servers in two hundred, two town hall.
Yeah.
And um, town attorney's in the basement.
Um, other police department, oh, this building.
And so, my question is, why wouldn't this, why wouldn't we connect everybody?
Yeah, I'm, let's talk about the town attorney first, I guess, what would stop, what would be the reason not to put the town attorney?
The town attorney, that was their preference, so, and, and it was a.
It, it has to do with um.
Their confidentiality.
It has to do with confidentiality, because we have an IT staff that is, are union employees, and they're not confidential employees. So, the people that are accessing the town attorney's information, you know, they.
It was their impression that it was a conflict.
But that would, that would no longer, you can still segregate them out in the cloud, so they remain, they remain sort of their own entity in the cloud.
Right.
Not through, not through our IT.
They can still remain private.
They can still remain private, but then we don't have to have the backup, they don't, they would not be in the system, because what, we have hardware for them, we have two other sets of hardware, other than at, at the uh, you know, at, at the twelve ninety-five?
Right, a server.
Two other servers. So, have you guys assessed those also?
No, they didn't.
But I, I will tell you that if you can get them to go to the cloud, we, we probably have forty police departments, we're all seizures compliant, if we get the background check, federal background check, and, and everybody that has access, um, has to be obviously residing in the US, and has to have the seizures compliance. So, there isn't an employee that works for us because of the police departments, that isn't seizures compliant.
So, how many, how many, how many people do they serve? Between the, how many desktops does the police department and attorney's office have?
Police department probably has forty-five, and the town attorney has nine.
And so who maintains their service at this point?
ABL. And John King does police department.
ABL's a, a, another company?
Yeah.
Global company.
So, the, and this is like lega- this is legacy, what kinda software are they using?
Let's talk about town attorney first, town attorney only uses um, office applications, that's it, so it's just Word, Excel documents, confidential documents, so they're stored on a separate server that was just upgraded last year.
And is there redundancy on their stuff?
No, it's ma- um, well, I shouldn't say that it's maintained and backed up by ABL, so I think that they do offsite backups.
So, so we have a contract to off, to store their stuff as backup in the cloud right now with ABL?
I don't know what their contract is, I'm not, but I believe in information, but I'm sure that ABL, um, they do do an offsite backup, they're not physically here, they remote access, so I would imagine that they do have offsite backup. And the police department runs several applications, they have a Ricky scan application, they have an arrest application, they have their warrant applications coming from justice court, and John King maintains those. They have access to Suffolk County, um, Suffolk County has a, a fifty-five oh five firewall over there that they maintain, so that they can get um, all of the information from them.
So, all of their information is stored on their server here, and?
Server on the police department.
And there's, the, their, John King is their backup, that's their redundancy, or who's?
John King is their network administrator.
Uh, but, but where's their backups, that's, they're, they then contract through Suffolk and stored in the cloud?
No, 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 I'm sure that they're local, no.
They interface with Suffolk County, right, so that Suffolk County can access the reference here.
So, really they can access Suffolk County.
Right, but if their server goes down, where's their information stored?
Locally.
What's local? Off, offsite.
In their building.
No, in their building.
Well, here, and then offsite, I think with ABL, yeah?
Not at two hundred hell, ABL only does town attorney.
Right, but what I'm saying is that the server in the town attorney's office does have redundancy.
Yes, the town attorney is done.
We don't have a.
They have redundancy through ABL, they're being backed up to the cloud.
Yep.
Police department is its own domain, has their own servers, and everything is contained in two town hall.
So, they're being, I guess the backup is in the cloud for the town attorney's server is what you're saying? No, this is the police department we're talking about, she originally said that the town attorney's office does have redundancy through the cloud, it's ABL backed, so.
Through ABL.
ABL backed, so, but the police, the police, the police is separate from the town attorney.
ABL re-stick in the pillow.
Yes. So, we're not sure who their backup is.
And we don't know if ABL is backing up through the internet locally, or are they actually backing up to the cloud and using a service, it would have to be a third-party service, which would make sense. And then the police department, what they really should have, if they don't wanna go to a cloud solution like the town may go to, is at least get a Datto backup. And they would be backing up locally, be able to spin up if the server went down, for, for business continuity, and, and go to the cloud if they couldn't have access to the building. They could literally from their police car, access their data as if they were sitting in their office, in the cloud if they had a Datto.
Can they do that now, does anybody know?
It's not set up there right now.
So, they can't access all their.
So, they're.
I think we're getting confused here, they, they, they do have the ability to access their information from the car, right, that, that's their.
Yes, I agree.
Right, so now we're talking about backup, so they don't have a Datto backup, you're saying if they had that solution, that's what they would be able to do.
If their server went down, that's what we're talking about, okay.
That's just another.
An option.
Little option to confuse everybody a little more.
So, my question is, do municipalities tend to have three separate servers for three, for different departments, or do most town municipalities, I mean, there's cost involved, and then there's security involved, and everything else? So, do, do, do most municipalities separa- separate out the three?
I'd say it really depends on the size of them, so if they're a small municipality, they may just use one or two servers, start it together, and others will have them separate.
Most, most police departments are separate.
So, is, so there's a diff- another cost associated with all of that, how, and we don't know how old their ser- server?
They're multiple servers, and, and they're, none of them are end of life, they were just replaced in the last couple of years.
Okay, so they're, they're pretty good, it's, the only thing is, the question is what the entity is to the backup?
Right, and the only thing that we budgeted for last year was replacement of switches, which we had originally in this group, and we took it out because it was budgeted for two thousand seventeen.
And it was completed?
It was not completed.
That's the money that they were saying combined with what we have left in the budget this year?
That's separate, police department submits their budget through, through IT, and those were the last three things that we had to do for this year.
Okay, so are they on track to be done, or the, the switch changes?
They're on track to be done, they're included in the price that they gave us.
Okay, so they're, for the police?
Right.
So, they're.
Just the switches.
Just the switches, okay.
Not backup.
Not backup.
So, I guess that's what I'm, what I, so, the IT stuff for the police department, you're, you do the, you maintain the actual system itself through IT, but then they contract out for their services? Is that, am I following that correctly?
No, John King is an employee.
Okay.
So, he works over in the police department.
Right, so, but, so he maintains their server.
Right.
And, but, so he'd like the switch changes, switch, switch.
Right, we would contract somebody out to do that.
Okay, and that comes through John, or that comes through you?
He put the request in, and then I work with.
Okay, so then you oversee whatever that changes, that's what I'm trying to figure out, okay, all right, so then that's included in this. And is there anything with the town attorneys that needs to get done also, or they're up to date with their stuff? They're up to date, and how long is their system, when would their system have to be?
They just replaced it last December.
Okay, and so that usually has what life expectancy?
At least five years, because they're only storing um, Word, Excel documents on it.
All right, so then. So, then my other question then is, if they're, and they're on the, they're not, they have hard drive, they have hard drive with each one of their computers, okay.
Let me just ask.
The switches just clear for data.
Correct, check the clock.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we then consider treating the town attorney like we're treating um, the departments that have GIS and AutoCAD, so that?
Yes, I, I, I'm shaking my head, thinking the same thing.
So, so, so we don't, so, so we give rid of these implications here with um, ABL, and um, it's all, and it's all backed up.
I, 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 I wouldn't just go, even go on the cloud, I would even store it up.
I would, I would, if they're only using his word and email and SharePoint, don't even consider Neverfail, just buy licenses from, they have Office three sixty-five. Then we just back up Office three sixty-five on the cloud to cloud through Microsoft. There's no reason to have a server there.
So, we can give that server to the police department, I mean.
Well, you gotta do it soon. Um, is, is John um, King or whatever, is he, is he, is he a police officer?
No, he's a town attorney hired to handle IT over here.
Okay.
Okay. So, when they have a glitch in the system, John King services it.
Right, he's there day to day.
That's what he's at, yeah, he does, he does, he does it for us, fine as well.
And are they slow or have issues over there, or no, their system's up, running just fine, there's no issues as far as lag time or anything else from them?
Not reported, so they didn't report to us if they had lag time.
So, there's an ex- no interface at this point?
They access us, they get to town hall share, they can access our fund account, they have admin, so we're, we're on the same wire, they have their own domain, so they authenticate on their own active directory, but if they need to get to anything that's over here on our servers, they have access to it. Their internet connectivity goes through us, so they go through our core switch.
It's the storage, the backroom, it's on a separate server.
But there's several, yeah, everything's on a separate server.
All right, so it's a lot to do. It has to do with confidentiality reasons, for reasons that you discussed by the police department, and then also, like, for our ambulance corps with the, with the medical billing, they have to be HIPAA certified, so all the information is, remains confidential.
I get all that.
But all that can be done on the cloud?
All that can be done with one server.
Yeah, and that's, that's it, that, that.
Comes down to security, and, and everybody has, like you said, I mean.
Cause each, 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 I mean, if you have an application, you can put whatever, whatever you want on there as far as sec- security, on a particular software application project.
Absolutely.
Product, so it has nothing to do with where it's.
Stored.
Correct.
Right, so they don't need a server to store their stuff, because it's just the access point, and, and what you're, basically what your, your security or your firewalls are for that particular program. Right, all right, so.
But I think um, we're told.
But I think um what Paul was asked to do is figure out the current D M system and the lag and fix that. And this does that, not including moving them potentially, whether it's the town attorney and at some point police over.
Right.
So this does just that. If we have additional cost savings by moving the town attorney over here and then additional cost savings after that by moving police over here, that just comes with the package.
And you're saying future costs for your business continuity solution, like disaster recovery, that it all comes into play with what's happening out there today with cybersecurity, firewalls, multi-layered defense, dual authentication. Maybe buy the software and it's all about pretty many layers of defense that you could put in place so the bad guys don't get in because they're out there.
Many blocks you can, can you?
And and that was all part of our next phase after we fixed the lag. That was part of our next phase, especially cybersecurity.
Right, but we are looking to buy more software programs for our telephone technology and for other technology that's uh being upgraded constantly. That requires more um capacity.
Part of the space, memory, right.
So that's what we were looking to do with the I P S system and with the um.
Oil.
Oil of us and also with the uh new applications that we want to put into the I P S system and bringing other departments on board and then also the um. Why can't I think of it?
I don't know.
Work, work.
P A S?
Workload, that's that's the end of the line.
Yeah.
Oh, workload.
Mine is only workload.
Well, you you go to the file, you could always add whenever you want and delete.
And you can also increase capacity.
Increase capacity.
Just by to limit it.
To limit it.
We do, we do. A lot of these don't have to buy equipment. We don't have to buy equipment to do that.
You never have to main thing again.
And then my other question is, I I and I'm not sure how it works, but I know it's always something with emails. So all of that gets, it's all on the cloud. It's all.
Right now, it is, yeah.
All right. And who do we have that with in the cloud?
Microsoft.
It's for Mike, it's for Mike.
Microsoft. Total is our, total is our, um, but everything is directly to Microsoft, to Microsoft.
And the one thing to keep in mind is, well, it's hardware. It doesn't have an infinite lifecycle. Um, the ability with the proposed option number one is right now we have to forklift all this out, put this in. You don't have that here. You would replace nodes as you need or air capacities. Um, but the maintenance, you have to buy hardware contracts for this and and maintain the hardware. All that goes away in the cloud hybrid option number two. That's running on the latest hardware that Neverfail maintains, they upgraded, they troubleshooted, and all that goes away.
Right, that's why I like that. I like the hybrid.
And what's the life expectancy on this, this?
I read the magazine. It's forever, but I don't believe it.
Who said that? The the uh the the seller?
It was Fortune five hundred magazine. I happened to be reading about it and they talked about this hyper converged technology and 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 they say that you can just continue to add to it. Do I think of the last ten years? Absolutely not. I don't agree with it at all.
And the other thing, just just the actual physical space where it's stored?
That's your opinion. Like, yeah.
Is this run hotter? Does does the room need to be reconfigured? Is there different temperatures that need to happen?
Right now, the current solution comprises of two racks. So all this would fit into one rack. Um, the cooling is adequate in the building. I don't see any problems there.
Okay.
Yo, going to the cloud, you you're saving, you know, the return investment is also you're not giving electricity to to all this hardware. And you don't have to worry about it's much cooling and all of that stuff really goes away. Everybody thinks about that, but there's a cost to it. It's twenty four seven, three hundred and sixty.
Oh, sure. And based on recent conversations.
And you also want to go down.
Right.
Based on recent conversations in this meeting, this can be scaled, mo- this might be scaled down a little bit. So we have to go back and talk about all that.
Cause we don't have a large I T staff. I think they're possibly working.
Well, because it's it's like the hamster wheel at this point.
If this is something that will at least get them to not have to. They should be running their I T, not trying to fix a Band-Aid. And that's all, and that's all they can do.
If you run I T, they don't need to run the data center. That's what the trends are.
Exactly.
Two people is really open up. They have a lot on that buddy. Well, that's also part of twenty four seven because Cory can tell you, you know, something happens on a Saturday night, she's getting a call, Terry's getting a call. Not that that won't happen in the future, but we won't be getting a lot of those because they'll be handled before it even gets to us. Cause we're not maintaining that hardware to have to worry about.
Right, and there's remote access.
Good luck in the future.
And just the loss of data, possible loss of data is really um.
It's a very real.
And this is not secure at this point, but it could use more security.
We we would deal with, we decided to go in that direction. We do a proof of concept, make sure that everybody will happy with what we did, the screens, input, connectivity, backups, we do a P O C. Make sure that he does what we say it's gonna do and all the engineers and folks said that it would do and if it works out well, then we move forward. But we would not jump into it and, you know, just just deploy a system of this, of this size.
And what's the life of a computer these days?
I don't know. It's three to five years. Most people get five years.
And I think you're getting more when we say the existing thin clients could go another couple of years because they're really just.
Modern.
Just like dumb, yeah, dumb dumb springs. It's a terminal.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, so they don't have to be replaced because they're really not doing anything other than just bringing the data from the server. That's why you would get more out of it.
All right. Any questions? Other questions?
Oh, we got a lot of, a lot of thinking to do.
Yeah, a lot of thinking to do. I know.
A lot of questions to answer.
Could you just get a number on the lease prices for the for the computers?
Yeah, sure. You got the other numbers there, right? And those are are estimates. But yeah, we'll get you a price uh to lease the um.
So the other thing we also have to do is on the cloud side, cause those are just uh rough estimates. We can get those final. We have to figure out what are the savings we have and then what are the costs we have.
Yeah.
So if if we need more bandwidth, that may be a cost, but there's other savings involving going on the cloud. Um, so we're gonna get all that together.
Well, that's, that's what I'm looking at as a, as a bill under the plan. But I mean, if this is something that we have all security risks and all the security threats that the town attorney feels, if I like no ABL contact is causing.
Right. And and that was the next phase anyway. We were looking to do that if we fix the um lag issue, we were looking at that as our next phase. So if we do want to go on cloud, we're fixing a lot of the things that we had in our three year plan. Um, and uh, as I said, when we get some of the costs that we would save, whether it's uh ABL and whatever else it may be, we'll have that cloud uh solution for you, the course of the cloud solution.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Guys, good luck. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
You're the rest of your song. It's quick.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Oh, it's too fast. Exactly right.
Gone very fast. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
I see you guys.
I see you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, number one, ring for service, yes.
You guys both have them up already or?
Yeah, just got them.
Okay.
Um, I wanted to amend the agenda to include the dredging of Wading River Creek. I've been asking for this to be put on the work session agenda since June twenty first. And then again this week, and for some reason it's not making on the work session agenda. So I think it's important to discuss because we need to get going on this dredge. There's money that's allocated for the dredge. Uh, the cost is about a hundred and twenty three thousand. We need to get the surveyor to get out and survey it right away. Sitting with the fire departments and sitting with the Wading River Fire Department, the fact that this um inlet is filling up and needs to be dredged sooner than later.
I mean, I, we certainly did something out of the normal that we we normally do this. I mean, I have a norm, but I'm wondering.
Well, actually, actually, we did it, we did it up until two thousand. It was done when Liper closed. There was one, ten dredges in there and it was dredged up to two thousand fourteen. Then was not dredged again for another four years. Um, and was just dredged, I believe it was last year, uh, once again.
March, I believe, right.
And it filled up pretty much right it, right away. So the dredging that was done wasn't really effective. We have and and a couple of items have come up. There was uh uh Drew had contacted.
One, we were trying to have conversation.
Um, Drew had, had asked Drew um to find out how many people are using it, uh, what is the, what is the access point from it? I did, I did do believe that he spoke to uh the Bay Constable, um, and the information that came back from the Bay Constable and Drew were inconsistent. So I don't actually have a full information on that. I was waiting to hear back from that. Also waiting back to hear back from the chief, uh, his input on this. Um, we have also reached that.
The chief of Wading River?
The chief of police. Um, and then I also, uh, we have been in contact with Lee Zeldin, which I believe that we had informed you about. Um, that he had contacted the Army Corps of Engineers. We started talking to him in the beginning of January, really, when I came in. Um, and we are on the list. They're right now, I forget where they are now. Then they're going to Goldsmith's Inlet and then they will, they're coming to look at it here because we're really trying to come up with a permanent solution. Um, after speaking to the Bay Constable, he said even, you know, unless it's really dredged in the beginning of May to dredge it in March or even late fall, um, is no benefit because it fills in so quickly. So there is.
Well, we found that to be the truth because and then there's this this narrow window to do it because of the piping over or whatever's there and and restrictions for D B C and.
Yeah. So 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 is it really cost effective to be doing it as we're doing it now? I mean, this is kind of why.
According to, I'm I'm answering your question.
I I know, but I can I finish talking first? This is why we really wanted to wait for the Army Corps of Engineers to come take a look and to give us a little bit of advice how to proceed forward before before putting it on the schedule. And that should be within a couple of weeks, so.
You're comparing apples to oranges because the twin jetty has nothing to do with the Wading River Creek dredge.
Well.
And as a matter of fact, the money that's in the account right now is based on a settlement. And the money can only be applied to Wading River Creek dredge.
Correct.
So the fire chief for Wading River and the rescuers from Wading River are requesting that this be done as soon as possible because they need it done so that they can go out and do rescues.
Well, they go from Matituck inlet. That's where they have the boat right now and that's what they have been doing. Or they go, they launch from Shoreham. That's the information that I'm getting. So as I said, it's a couple of weeks. This has been, it was four years that it wasn't done. Um, it was done and filled in very, very quickly and so it was not successful. So the Army Corps of Engineers, who are the experts at this, and it's not just about the jetty, it's also to have a permanent solution to be able to do with what what will happen at that creek. So we were asking and we, did we communicate this, that they will be out hopefully in the next couple of weeks? I think we should give them the opportunity to communicate that.
I didn't get that communication.
And then we can move forward.
Well, I I can tell you, um, this this is not, nothing new.
Correct.
We've been dealing with this creek for my whole eleven years here. In fact, there was, I, Army Corps did come out and do a study and they, they did a big graph on the board about how they're gonna create another jetty and. And then, of course, they're having problems with that because that's gonna send some sand the other way.
Right.
Um, so I I don't know whether there was ever really a permanent solution to this that wasn't millions and millions of dollars.
But I don't think, yeah, I don't. But I think, I think we should, if we're going to spend money dredging the creek, I think it should be done at a time of year that's effective.
Oh, it's definitely sweeping sand out.
And also, also done in a manner that that will be, have some sort of plan to, of sustainability moving, moving forward. Um.
Okay, you can't dictate when the dredge can occur because it's in the permit from the Army Corps of Engineers and from the New York State D B C. We have about two hundred thousand dollars in the account.
Mm-hmm.
The dredge costs a hundred and twenty three thousand.
Now, who is that by?
Can only be used.
Who's, who, who are you talking about for dredging? That you got a price for it?
No, we, we have contractors. We go off R F P, but the survey needs to be done immediately. We have a price of sixty eight hundred dollars that needs to be authorized to get the survey done. So that the dredge can occur in October because the fire department is complaining that they don't have access to the waters and if there should be an emergency, that the town is, you know, not acting responsibly by not dredging.
So who from the, who, so who from the fire department is, is, I haven't received anything from any of the fire departments?
Chief of the Wading River Fire Department, and it has also been discussed at the joint council of the fire chiefs with the chief of police.
Cause I haven't received any communication from them at all.
Well, because it's something that we've done and we have the money allocated for, but it just seems to be getting blocked out of your.
Well, I'll co- I'll contact them over there and see, see if if it is a big concern and then we'll see about putting it on the agenda.
Well, I just see the urgency on their part, but it is like sweeping sand out of a screen door with the wind blowing.
Understood.
So I understand that maybe, again, I don't think there's any clean cut answer to it.
And I don't think that there's gonna be any permanent fix that happens in the next couple of years.
No, there never will be. Nope.
So the money is allocated for the dredge of the Wading River Cree- Creek and that's what the Wading River Fire Department is asking that we do is be responsible.
I'll contact them over there, so.
But the date is October. I don't, I don't think it's.
No, no, we need to get the survey done and we already have the permits in place so we can go ahead, but the permit restricts us as to when we can do the dredge.
Oh, right. Yeah, I knew that. And then I knew there was time for things, yeah.
So.
But we need to get the survey done and we need to get the the down payment to the surveyor so that he can schedule us because he may not be able to get out there.
So now who's the sur- who's the surveyor?
For six weeks.
That you're referring to?
Uh, it's the same surveying company that we use every year with our dredge.
Which one was that they?
I'm gonna tell you right now.
Dredger Russ.
The surveyor is F C Watson, Lanterville, Twenty One Place, Babylon, New York.
So if they reached out to you in email, could you just share that with me, please?
Uh, they actually reached out to the town engineer because he's the one that uh is, has been also pushing for the dredge to occur. So I will forward you the town engineer's email when it comes to the dredge.
I have his, I have his email. So he said, but he didn't communicate, didn't share that with you?
I have. I have an email from the town engineer.
So could you share that with me if he's sending you the info for the survey? Sure, thank you.
Just because I've been pressing it and seeing him on my emails to your office.
That's fine. I'm just asking you, if you could share that, I'd appreciate it. That's all.
Since June.
So, okay, thank you. All right, should we move on to resolutions?
I I like it. It's a good idea.
Okay. Uh, two thousand seventeen hockey ring resurface project number seventy one six six closure. Uh, C D B G, I always wanna say C B G at the other one. Uh, two thousand seventeen program budget adoption.
Man, right.
Uh, authorizing removal of fix, fixed asset records from the system. I know John and I had asked you about this far as software goes. All right.
All these pieces.
I'm just trying to find for the software. I'm not sure if that's physical or if it's just we don't renew a license. So I'm not sure how that gets, we're just gonna check on that. Uh, grants excavation importation permit as provided by chapter two two nine to Riverhead Development LLC. This is for Popeye's Restaurant. Uh, grants excavation importation permit as provided by chapter two two nine to Riverhead Commons LLC. Uh, this is ratifies the authorization of a cosponsorship of Arts in the Parks Festivals of Light, Festival of Lights, August ninth through the eleventh, two thousand eighteen. September fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and October twentieth, two thousand eighteen, five P M to ten P M with the Riverhead Business Improvement District Management Association, Inc. And Grand Javel Park authorized a supervisor to execute a license agreement with designated craft food vendors, alcohol vendors, and other parties. Suspends enforcement of the Riverhead Town Code section two oh five dash three, um, as solely limited to the aforementioned dates, time, and place of the Art in the Park equivalent Festival of Light.
And we're cosponsoring that?
Take a breath, yeah.
And we're, we're cosponsoring that because it's insurance reasons, right? Is that what we're doing? That's why we don't.
Well, actually, it's, the way it works is it's the town board, we've established the town, the Business Improvement District, so we, that's, that's the um. And then codes, cosponsoring it with the Town Riverhead Business Improvement District Management Association. So that's the, the cosponsorship there. It's the same as, it's done for a live on twenty five.
Right, that's the first one.
Yeah, yeah. Um, budget adoption to attend Suffolk County Award of HUD home grant funding. Authorize the purchase of a two thousand nineteen A T thirty seven G articulating te- telescopic aerial device bucket truck for the use of street lighting division. This we had already approved, but we didn't actually authorize the uh, the actual truck purchase. So, but we did the budget for that already. Uh, approves military leave of absence for a police officer, approves the attendance of a one, of one police department employee to the New York State Police two thousand eighteen homicide seminar. Amends resolution five sixty five. This one is, what happened was we appointed some uh buddy with a date. Um, oh, I know why because the def- the definition for the uh. Suffolk County didn't accept, uh, hadn't accepted the um job description.
Right.
Uh, when we did the appointment, so it had to be changed to after they accepted the job description. Uh, accepts the retirement of a maintenance mechanic three, accepts the reti- is this the same one? This is the same one, eleven and twelve? Yes, so we'll, twelve would, we'll skip.
Yeah, the duplicate?
Yes, the duplicate, yeah. Uh, ratifies a request for a leave of absence. Fourteen is appoint a part-time maintenance mechanic one to the seniors program. Fifteen is appoints an assistant to the town engineer. So this is Ernesto is done with his probationary, as provisional appointment. So that's nice.
All right.
Um, sixteen is accepts the resignation of a senior citizen's aide. Seventeen is adopts a local law to amend chapter three oh one of the Riverhead Town Code entitled zoning and land development, Article fifty two, commercial solar energy production systems of the Riverhead Town Code. Eighteen is classified to action pursuant to SECR and issues negative declaration and grant special permit for Jamesport Vineyard Bistro addition twelve fourteen Main Road, Jamesport, New York. Uh, Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred dash sixty eight dash one dash twelve point one. And nineteen is extends bid contract for print, printing of recreational. And nineteen is extends bid contract for print, printing of recreational brochure. Um, John, was this, did, did this need corrections?
Um, there, yeah, there are some corrections, but it's not final, I guess, we'll, we'll correct all the other ones.
Okay. Okay, it's just the extension of the bid number that we're on for that one. Uh, twenty is corrects bid award for janitorial supplies. Uh, twenty-one is ratifies the appointment of a seasonal rec aide to the Recreation Department. Twenty-two is ratifies the appointment of a seasonal recreation staff to the Recreation Department. Twenty-three is establishes soar rent for Suffolk County Tap Map, Tax Map, zero six hundred dash eighty-two dash three dash six, former Mercy High School. Uh, twenty-four is authorize soar district employees to attend a course. Twenty-five is authorizes town clerk to publish and post a notice for request for proposals for update of town freshwater let, wetlands inventory map. Um, this was, uh, some funding we had received, uh, a while back, uh, to do this work, so we'll be putting out the, um.
Certainly a lot more, yes, a lot more now than there was ten years ago.
Yeah, so, I, I think it's time.
Yep.
Um, twenty-six is authorize town clerk to publish and post a notice to consider the adoption of a local law entitled local law to change the term of office of the town supervisor from two years to four years.
Again.
I know. Um, twenty-seven is authorize a supervisor to execute professional services agreement with East End Accounting Services. Um, corp, uh, Bill, this is for the audit committee, or what is this one in reference to?
So, our audit committee is a voluntary committee.
The independent audit committee, yes.
Independent audit committee, but we don't have an internal order, so if we don't have enough work for an internal order, we're hiring outside consultants to come in and do the internal ordering based on the audit committee's recommendation.
Okay, and I think they were just there looking for somebody who might be interested in being on the audit committee, we have that up. We're looking for, uh, volunteers who might be interested in doing that, and they can call my office if somebody wants to apply for that.
Actually, it's the town clerk, right? They have to submit their applications and their information to the town clerk is what the.
Yeah, that says on the press.
Right, but if, if they have questions or want information about it. Uh, local law to adopt amendment to procurement policy pursuant to general municipal law. Twenty-nine is ratifies acceptance of a donation of plants from Riverhead Home Depot.
Wait a second, you know, on the last one, on twenty-eight?
Yeah, right.
The procurement policy, there have been several small businesses that have come in and talked to me, and they have concerns, I think they spoke to the supervisor as well. And I know they spoke to Jim, and they are unable to talk to Cap, Ms. Kent, and also to Mr. Hubbard, cause they're on vacation. And they have some concerns about this, and I don't think that we should be adopting it until we've spoken as a board again about it to address some of their concerns. And additional costs to the town, um, for, for certain language in there that I'm still.
Well, I, I think it, I think it begs to have a, a round table with it.
Yeah.
With all of us, yeah.
I think so too. So, do you wanna keep it on, and then we can table it if we want at the meeting?
Yeah, I think we should.
Or you wanna look into pro- front-up package and.
I don't think it's that, I think we should just schedule it for next Thursday for work session discussion.
Uh, either, either what I'm.
Why?
Like, because we did, because we did the public and post, so, we did, we had the public hearing on it, so we can, I think that, why not do it at a, at a town board meeting?
I don't think that it should be in the pocket, and so, these people have had an opportunity to speak to the other two councilors about it.
Right, so instead of, instead of calling for a table, why don't we just put it on for the next meeting?
But those days work session.
But, but, but if, if we want the public to be able to come up and speak at it, we have to do it at a public meeting, not at a work session.
So, this is to adopt, so.
I, I understand, I understand that, Jody, but if.
So, I don't think that we should have it on to adopt for Tuesday until all of the concerns have been addressed and discussed as a board in its entirety.
Right, that makes sense.
But that's, that's why you put it on, and then, if the public wants to come up and address it in a public forum, if you do it at a work session, the public can't come up and discuss it, so if you do.
Well, I don't think you have three votes to put on right now.
Could I finish talking for a second?
Yeah.
So, then you can put it up, and if the public comes up and the board then chooses that they choose not to vote on it, then we can table it after that discussion.
I don't want it in the pocket as of right now, I don't think it's ready to go into the pocket for adoption. I think that you.
Well, when do you want the pa- public to comment on it? How does the public know to come and comment on it then?
The public commented on it at the public hearing, and then there was a ten-day period that they could come in and discuss it with the board members, which the public did, including yourself, and they have concerns. If you wanna ignore those concerns and not discuss it as a town board.
Jody, I'm not ignoring, I'm doing the exact opposite, because if we keep this in the pocket, the public knows that it's in the pocket, they know to come up and discuss it.
It'll be in the packet again when they can come up and discuss it.
But if you want the public to come and comment on it, you have to put it in the packet so the packet, the public knows to come and comment that there's a possibility for adoption on this. Unless you want to reopen the public hearing and re, I don't know if you have to re-notice it at that point, or you wanna keep the public hearing open because the public, so, public comments, and if we feel that we don't, we would like to table at that point, then we table it after the public comment. And you can reintroduce it again.
No, I, I don't, I don't think it belongs in the packet on Tuesday.
My gosh, I, I.
But there's no, there's no notice to the public to come and comment on it.
Well, there's no notice to the public that it's in the packet either.
Well, it is, because it is pub- it's published.
When did it publish, just like two minutes ago?
Twenty-four hours before.
It will go on Monday.
Cause I just, I just now.
But it's on the agenda.
It will be on the agenda on, on Monday, we put it on the website.
On Monday.
And so then.
Monday, the, the day before the town board meeting.
Right, and so if the public, then that gives the opportunity for the public to come comment on it, and if we decide as a board that, that we're not ready to vote on it, then we table it. But otherwise, there's no notice to the public to come and discuss it again.
I would like to do a little more homework before we put it up for adoption, and I would like to talk to some of the unions about some of the concerns that the small business owners are having in town that are saying that they're gonna be pushed out of the system and it's gonna force the town.
And I've already reached out to.
But that's where, that's why you put it on the agenda, so the public can come and comment on it to the board.
I would just like to get more information on it before we put it up for adoption.
Well, this board isn't ready to vote on it.
Then, then I think you table it then, then when it comes up, we table it. Um, ratifies acceptance of a donation of plans for Riverhead Home Depot.
Jim, do you wanna put it up in the packet, or do you wanna discuss it again next Thursday at work session?
I, I, you know what? It, it's, you know what, it's a, it's a tit for tat, really, it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter one way or the other, but the problem is that, I, I think this board needs more time to investigate some of the concerns from this, the local small businesses that came to us, and I already reached out to a couple of the union guys, in fact, I don't have, I don't, I'm not even gonna see them until Monday, so.
And, and I think that by, I think that by putting this in the packet, you're gonna bring out all the union members that are gonna say, vote on it, vote on it.
I don't mind that, I mean, that's.
I don't mind it either, but why bring people out of their houses if we're, if there's a potential that we might table the resolution, like, why don't we bring?
We don't know if we're gonna table till the public comes and, and expresses their concern. You know, that, that's, that's, if you have a work session, there's no public comment section in a work session. That's why you do it at a public meeting, so the public can come up and comment on it.
That's why you have a public hearing, which we had.
Right, right, but, but.
Which we had.
Right, we did, we did.
And we closed public comment, leave it open for written comments for ten days.
We did.
All right.
So, then we bring it up, and if.
So, now we're not ready to vote on it yet, it's not ready to go to, uh, to a vote.
But why wouldn't it be ready to go to a vote?
Because there's concerns that I have, there's concerns that there must be concerns that you have.
But, but, but don't you wanna hear from the pub, but don't you wanna hear from the public about that?
That's what we had the public hearing for.
Give you from the public.
And a lot of people couldn't make it out that night.
I heard from the public, and, and I read the written comments.
But that's why you put it on the agenda, so the public comes out and, we can extend the public hearing, we can have another public hearing on it, I don't mind that either.
I disagree with putting it in the packet, so, Jim, do you, do you wanna put it in the packet?
You know what, it, it doesn't matter, I can tell you that this board is not ready to vote on it as written until I'm finished with what I have to.
So, then it doesn't go in the packet.
And that's what the public hearing does. Normally, a public hearing, and normally this, you leave it open for ten days, and it's not, most public hearings that I've been a part of, it doesn't really go to a vote for adoption for, for at least a, a cycle of at least one meeting between. So, you can get all your things, this is, I mean, we just had the public hearing last meeting, and this meeting we're voting on, so, to me, I think it's, it's kinda.
Which is what we generally do with the public here, with our public hearings.
Well, maybe you do, but that's not the way I, I, I see.
Well, we've been doing that since, pretty much since January.
Right, like I said, like you do, but normally it's a public hearing, and then there's normally a day meeting between a night. We try to do the public hearings at night, and then we try to have it at the next night meeting, but that's, you do what you want. I mean, if it's in the packet, I, I can tell you it's gonna be tabled, and you can put that in the press.
And it, it could be tabled, yes, you want. But it allows, it allows the public to come in and comment on something on the agenda, and they know it's on the agenda. Um, thirty is rescinds resolution number five ninety-one of two thousand eighteen and cancels a public hearing regarding an alleged unsafe and abandoned structure located at forty-two Zedunk Lane, Riverhead, also known as Suffolk County Tap Map number six hundred dash zero forty-two dash zero one dash zero twelve. Uh, thirty-one is adopts a local law amending chapter three oh-one entitled zoning and land development to add article, uh, forty-two, transfer of development rights to the code of the town of Riverhead.
What is that?
This is number thirty-one. This was, we, we did do this one, and there, there was a, a chart that needed to be added to that. Oh, from the public hearing, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
Re-connection, yeah, I get it.
Uh, approves, uh, extension of performance security posted by Mazzy Homes East LLC in connection with the residential subdivision entitled Old Orchards at Bating Hollow, road and drainage improvements. Thirty-three is approves the application for fireworks permit of Bating Hollow Club Saturday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. There, and there's a lot of these. Thirty-four is approves chapter two fifty-five application at the Cystic Vibrosis Foundation CF Cycle for Ri- Life, Saturday, September fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Thirty-five is approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Jeffrey Lee, twenty, twentieth annual car show at Hallidale, Sunday, September sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, chapter, seven, thirty-seven approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Broadcast, Boldcast LLC Holiday Light Show at Island Park Sports.
I have thirty-six.
Where are you, in Hallidale?
The fix thirty-six?
There's missing.
Two for Hallidale.
Yep, one's for Craft Fair. Oh, I'm sorry, number thirty-six, okay. So, the second one is thirty-six would be approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Hallidale, Inc. Thirty-eighth Annual Country Fair and Craft Show, August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. This was my mistake, when, when, this was the country fair that I saw, not the other one, isn't it? Um, thirty-seven approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Bold Broadcasting LLC Holiday Light Show at Long Island Sports Park. Thirty-eight is approves the chapter two fifty-five application of the Mexican Folklore Dance Society of New York. This was an additional day that we did.
A live boat riding rodeo.
Yeah, that's right up your alley there.
Yeah, right up, up my alley, but it's.
And, and have they done any of the improvements? Because last time the planning administrator had talked to us and said that they gave them a list of things that they had to do in order to get final approval, and they haven't done any of it yet.
Um, John, do you wanna ask Laura if she wants to come in for that one?
July twenty.
It's actually Jeff Murphy.
I know, Laura's usually contacted, yeah, I'll, I'll contact her.
Okay, uh, thirty-nine is approves the chapter two fifty-five application of the Long Island Moose Classic Car, Car Show, Sunday, September ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, forty is authorizes town clerk to publish and post a public notice to consider a local law to amend chapter, chapter three oh-one entitled zoning and land development of the Riverhead Town Code, three oh-one attachment three, commercial district schedule, dimensional regulations.
The laws, it's not even. The, the new legislation is not even attached, about we're voting to go to public hearing now.
Correct, so I'm gonna pull that one out till we get this.
Which one is it, Laura?
It's forty.
What's the title?
It's authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to consider a local law to amend chapter three oh-one entitled zoning and land development of the Riverhead Town Code, three oh-one attachment.
And the, the public notice?
It, it's, 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 the whole resume is incomplete, it doesn't have anything about what it is.
We don't know what we're changing in the zoning, uh.
It's just commercial, commercial district.
I haven't seen that one, that must, that looks like it just got dropped down there, so. Uh, forty-one is approves chapter two fifty-five application of Polish Town Civic Association, Polish Town Street Bear Festival, August eighteenth and nineteenth.
You got.
Coming up. Uh, forty-two is authorizes a professional service agreement for the upgrade to the town of Riverhead GIS with Leroy GIS and Survey PC. This is what we had spoken about. Uh, forty-three is approves the application of fireworks permit of Riverhead Raceway, Saturday, August eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Forty-four is authorizes a supervisor to execute an agreement between the town of Riverhead and County of Suffolk, uh, to accept funds for Suffolk County Office for the Aging for the Purpose of Supplementing the Town's Nutritional Program for the Elderly. Forty-five is authorizes onsite productions to provide additional audiovisual production services for Cardboard Boat, Boat Race, two thousand and eighteen. And forty-six is approves chapter two fifty-five application of the Railroad Museum of Long Island Wooden Toy Train Play Days, August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Holy Mac, I'm at, yeah, 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 I'm still going through the.
I know. Which one are you going with?
I don't know.
I'm up to forty-six, is that what you're?
I don't even know, I'm still going through some sort of a contract to age it, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, that's like fifty pages.
That's right, yeah, I'm listening, I'm listening now.
Um, forty-seven, but Diane, you've got this one for forty-six?
Which one?
That's the Ra- Ra- Railroad Museum?
Oh, yeah, I have that.
Okay, and then forty-seven, I have ratified budget, uh, ratifies plant fifteen budget adjustment, construction of concrete, ground, storage tank, and booster station. Forty-nine is, uh, forty-nine is order calling public hearing regarding proposed extension of number ninety-one to Riverhead Water District, Pulaski Street, forty-eight.
And.
Forty-eight, what did I say, forty-nine?
That's not perfect.
Uh, forty-nine is authorizes Riverhead Water District employee to attend a water treatment plant operator two B certification course. Um, and then fifty is appoint a call-in registered nurse to the Recreation Department.
Yeah, yeah, that's second to thirty. And then we had the one that's, um, to one table.
Oh, we've had.
Which one is that one?
That one is the, uh, Touch of the Harvest.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We tabled that.
We had tabled this to see if we wanted to go to.
Hey, you might as well stamp the other one, cause we're gonna table that one, huh?
Yeah, to go to a different, um, place, but, uh, Tim had met with the parking district to check with them, and they were okay with holding it in the, uh, back parking lot, the, uh, south side parking lot, uh, downtown.
Uh, Laura, I had this, but I don't know if it was taken out, I just don't.
Uh, Paul.
Was that Paul?
Yeah, um, actually, I think that would, that's, it has to go to exact verse for that one. Um, so, John, uh, the software one?
Yeah, Bill, why do you, um, software, uh, like, rid of a bunch of software, you have to design it for, that jump, that's what's coming out.
Okay, so it's actual physical property, okay, so that would be, that's resolution three.
There's CDs, you gonna hang them on the tree in the art apart?
Oh, yeah, we can, we can give them to the.
Art and the Park?
Yeah, Art and the Park.
Sure.
Um, and then Jeff, do you wanna come up for the, uh, Jody had some questions about the two fifty-five?
Horse Park?
Yes.
They've done nothing, they're back on tonight's agenda because they wanna, oughta ask for a waiver or application of the condition regarding fencing around the wetlands. Uh, we requiring a stockade fence around the edges of the wetlands to keep people from going in there when you have multiple day events, if it's a concert or the.
This flashing in the wetlands?
Well, they, they already put in, uh, a target for the frisbee golf last year, and it shows up quite clearly on the Google Earth aerial, and we asked Dean about that, and he said, yeah, we know, we took it, they took it out, but that means they have been using it. So, we're looking for some sort of barrier to keep people out of the wetlands and the ponds.
Aren't they man-made, those ponds?
I have no idea, they were.
So, you'll, at their meeting with planning tonight, so then you'll update us after the planning board meeting?
Yeah, yep.
All right, so.
Yeah, cause there's resolutions in here to.
I think they should just do it with the bull ride, just have running of the bulls.
You don't want the bulls trampling through the weather.
Wasn't the wetland as I was traveling?
Okay, so just update, update, update us on this.
And make sure the fence is not red.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna wear this tie, Jim and I, Jim and I are gonna be running there going like this. As, uh, look how red he is.
Oh, you know what?
Is this, is this you? John, I'm just looking at, uh, number forty.
Uh, no, this is Bob, this is. I think this is for the TDR.
Okay, so that this, okay, so this is, this is what I was talking about before, this is the, the, the actual chart for the TDR, so it needs to get included.
Yeah.
So, it all has to be with that.
That's one chart out of three oh-one that we were.
This is the T, the TD, the TDR program came with a, came with a chart, so it was easy to read what was in the code of what you could build and what you can't.
Sending areas, receiving areas, that type of stuff?
Well, no, more, 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 more the, the, the FAR and what you could build if you have TDRs and of whether you're in a sewer.
Right.
The table's not consistent with what the code language is, so remaining the chart be consistent with the code language.
Okay.
Was the chart, uh, at the public hearing, it was subject to the public hearing?
No, this is the publish and post repub- for here.
So, we have to do it separately.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
The chart wasn't advertised in the last, uh, loss, I hope it is.
Right.
We have to do it separately. Okay, so this is really much, premier's error.
And so that Diane doesn't have to advertise the whole fifteen pages in it.
No, it's just, it's just a table.
Yeah, okay, all right, so that's that one, um.
Anything else?
No, I think that's it, right, we, did we, did we get everyone?
I think so.
So, you'll email us and let us know what's happening as far as what the planning board decides tonight as to, um.
Defense.
Yeah, and other improvements that deal with public safety and getting people to inform the site.
All right, thank you.
Interesting conversation.
All right, yeah, I might have to, thanks for that, I'll see what the update is.
Bull ride, I'd love to go watch some bull ride.
You can, you can.
Eight seconds, man.
Know how long you can stay up on the ball? You know how long you can stay up on the bull?
That's how long it's supposed to swing, takes, so.
Oh, all right.
Oh, is that right?
Is that the magic number?
Eight seconds is the magic number.
All right, can I get a first and a second, thank you, Jeff?
Sure.
First and second to go in executive session for personnel, matters leading to the discipline of an employee, matters leading to the hiring of a part-time employee, settlement of agreements, matters leading to the hiring of an employee, uh, and for litigation, litigation, uh, pending litigation in the matter of the county of Suffolk and county, and Suffolk County Comptroller, uh, versus the town of, uh, Babylon, um, at Al, so it's including all of the towns.
I'll make the motion.
A second. All right.
But I think, uh.
Hold a favor?
I have to excuse myself, because I'm in a board, maybe it's time, but. I see all the board's work that they've done.